Everyone, we will officially kick off this council meeting beginning here at 5:00 PM with a workshop. We do not have any specific agenda item that is listed for us underneath the workshop, so that gives us an hour here to begin working through the agenda. Hopefully, speed things up once we reach our regular meetings. So, council, what I thought we could do tonight is we'll just start going through the agenda, one item at a time, covering as much ground as we can in the workshop, and then we'll jump into the regular meeting once that time hits. So, starting off with the consent agenda, count or staff, anything pertinent for us to know about the consent agenda? Seems pretty straightforward. I think the only thing that's maybe a little bit unique is that MUD 57 is going out for an issuance of bonds, and so that's, you know, they've already authorized that, we just have to legally consent to it.
Yes, sir, and that's more of a formality, but that was something that Bobby and Tammy and I decided to start doing, I guess, two years ago. I think it was done sort of just administratively in the past, and we thought it would be good to have the, you know, formally come to council for each one. In fact, MUD 57 emailed us about that very thing today. Is there an issue? No, we just want to make sure that it's been public and everything. So, just like, I think we've done the MUD 56 ones that way as well?
Yeah.
And 39?
There are a couple that are required that way in the consent condition, so it made it where we didn't have to think or remember which ones require it and which ones don't.
Okay, perfect. Council, any comments or questions about the consent agenda?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lands?
Just curious on this number four, on the 13.08 acre tract for the amending of the zoning for the offices of the physicians. What really caught my attention was the 13 acre, 13 acres. I mean, why is it 13 acres? Is that... Are they just generally amending a larger section? The medical is not using the full 13 acres?
No, it's one of the reserves in Manuel's Town Center, and they planted it as a 13-acre reserve. Now, the S U P would apply only for a lease space within the building that is placed on this 13 acres. So, since we, when we were noticing, we, that was the only way to do a legal description on it, that's why that whole acreage was considered. But the S U P would apply only to the lease space in that building.
Okay. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Okay, moving on to the regular agenda items. Council, we'll kind of group, for the sake of voting when we get to the regular agenda, we'll vote for each of these separately, because there will be a process that we have to go through. But for the sake of discussion, we'll group the first three together as it relates to the budget and the tax rate. And so, Dan, Rosie, if you guys want to give us an overview of the finalized budget that I know, Dan, I think you sent out on Friday, we'll go through the same thing, but we'll have you guys give us an update during the regular meeting as well, just because it's pertinent for the community to hear. But is there anything that you guys would like to call out or highlight specifically for discussion tonight?
I just wanted to, I guess, a couple of things in the document itself, and I put it in the email that I sent out to you. But if you were to go to the updated letter, the city manager's letter, on page, it starts on page 19 in the document, just want to reiterate some of the highlights, I guess. So, even though the public hearing is set tonight for 58 cents, that's as much as y'all can possibly do. Just sort of hearing the way that the meetings have been going, we have prepared the budget document at 56 cents. So, if you were, if you wanted to go to 58 or to 57 tonight, obviously, we would just need to update the budget accordingly. But it, right now, it includes 56 cents. We were able to add those 13 positions. So, we've been talking about 12, so 12 in the general fund, and then also an administrative assistant in the utility fund. That's on page 21 within the document. So, we included all 13 of those. We updated the table at the very top of page 21. That's very similar to what I provided to you August 1st, but we went ahead and used that $359,000 home example instead of just a flat $300,000 home example, so that it's a little more real world. And then also, you know, so we still have the 3% cost of living adjustment in there. And then we were able to include 34 of the 35 supplemental requests. Those were on page 22. So, everything except for the TMRS updated service credit worked into the $2 million number that y'all talked about at the last meeting. And then after we get closer to the end of hurricane season, we're hoping to bring that back to you. What TMRS wants and needs from us is an actual ordinance that comes to you twice. So, the plan is right now, we'll bring it at the last meeting in November for the first reading, and then the second meeting in December. So, that way, we'll, whenever, if you actually approve it in December, we'll be past hurricane season, and we have to have it done before the end of the fiscal, end of the calendar year.
And this is the 600,000?
The updated service credit, yes, sir.
600, though, would bring it?
Yeah, I think it's, I think we're estimating 650, is that right, Rosie? Yeah. And it's, again, it's not like we write them a check for that amount. It's just the amount of our contribution throughout the year, right? Yeah, yes, sir. So, anyway, we have 34 out of 35 in there, and so, pretty exciting. The, I guess, the next thing you're going to ask probably is, so what does this look like if we move our 2 million out of fund balance? And that is on page?
Page 51.
Yes, 50, 51, exactly. And Rosie, you want to talk about that just a little bit, that what we're estimating that we'll have left over in fund balance?
Actually, that 49.34% is based on the beginning balance for next year. That's how the budget is calculated. Once you remove the 2 million, it'll go down to 43.53%, which is still higher than what we expected.
And how does that equate out, if we're talking about days, is that?
159 days.
And six months is 180?
Uh huh.
Yes, so at the beginning of the fiscal year, October 1, day 1, we'll have 180 days and kind of what, throughout the year, if we, if we keep that level, I guess, throughout the year, then the worst-case scenario is it would be down to 159?
159.
159.
And what are you guys, to kind of pause here for a second, what are you seeing as the contributing cause for being able to keep our fund balance above 40%? Is that because sales tax numbers, now that we're catching up a little bit, because they're always two months in the rear, are we seeing sales tax numbers coming higher than what we're projected?
Actually, it's our spending. Since we're not having to buy stuff with whatever we have left over right now, our ending balance should be higher than what I had estimated. So, that's what's actually helping.
Rosie is not letting anyone spend any money.
[laughing]
Anything else, Dan, that you guys would like to?
No. So, obviously, this document has got more pages than what we've been going through, you know, throughout the different presentations. There's a lot of information in here that has to be included for the award that we try and get, the GFOA award. And actually, there's even, I think, an appendix, so there's a little bit more information that Rosie will add when we send it off to them. It's just supplemental information about like our comp plan and major master drainage plan, master thoroughfare plan, and all that kind of good stuff goes into the back. But it's not necessarily new information, but it's certainly, you know, I understand that it's more information. There's good stuff towards the back about all of the different certificates of obligation. You can kind of see where any of those are at, and at a glance, all of the debt service. So, I'm just, I'm glad that we were able to get the document together for you. And, like I said, I'm happy to print out a copy. This is kind of what it'll look like. We just didn't want to do that in case, you know, if anything were to change tonight. We can start printing those out tomorrow. I think we've got all the materials, and if you want to, I assume everybody wants a physical hard copy. But we're excited, you know, that we, you know, I think that all the directors did a really good job of identifying the needs, and, you know, we stayed conservative but realistic. And, you know, if we're able to do this, and I guess, you know, not raise the taxes, then that's, it seems like it's, we're getting all of the checkmarks, which is really exciting. And most excitingly, we're at the end of this process. Rosie and I are very excited for this day to come.
Absolutely. Well, kick us off just with a few comments. And Dan, Rosie, team, and I'll say this during the public meeting, or the regular meeting at 6 for the public to hear, but great job. We threw a lot of questions y'all's way, a lot of requests, and you guys handled that, juggled all those balls, and got us what we were looking for there, making wise decisions. And Dan, you spoke to the question about, you know, how much we're going to have in the fund balance. Rosie, appreciate that insight. Just for council's sake, there were three items that I had brought up to Dan, and I'm going to vote, if the budget and tax rate stays as it is presented right now, I'll be voting in favor of both of them. But there are three items I'd like us to look at once the budget's adopted, that are more so kind of administrative than anything. If you notice, each of the departments have goals that they've established for the upcoming fiscal year, and these are great goals, and you can see a lot of work has been put into them. Some of them are tough to measure. So, for example, when you see like the words expanded engagement, what is, what does that mean? How do you, how do you measure that and see, are we able to actually attain this, and how are we tracking against it? I'd want to see some more specific data points, saying we want to open, we want to have the newsletter open rate increase by like 15%. Or, we want to reduce turnover by an additional 1%. So, down from, let's say, 9% to 8%. Whatever those goals are, I think we can hone in and get specific with that. And I know that across the board, we're going to be entering in the month of October for performance reviews, and that's going to be a great opportunity where maybe the second meeting in November, first meeting, second meeting October, first one in November, we could have an agenda item to discuss how we make some of those goals specific. The second item, you know, Dan, let's say our finances start coming in even better than what we expected. You know, Lowe's gets opened, we have a few other businesses that start generating additional property tax and sales tax. There are still some items that we're not fulfilling within this budget. So, what would be the roadmap for what we would tackle next, let's say, in the mid-year budget adjustment, if it started to look better than what we're projecting it to look?
Yeah, so after the TMRS, the next big things are the rest of the staff. And then, keep in mind, we didn't have any capital projects included in here. So, you know, we are going to have to have a serious conversation soon about water. You know, we're doing well on wastewater, once that water reclamation facility is up and running. But we can't say the same thing for the side of water. Right now, all of our city water comes from groundwater. So, probably be a good strategy session on where we want to go at that time. You know, say, like you said, maybe the mid-year adjustment. If money broke free right now, and we could do some other staffing positions. I know the chief was wanting a dispatch supervisor. I think we have eight dispatchers total, and so, that's probably a good spot to look for a supervisor position. There are some other positions that Joe's was looking for. We were talking about some folks in finance. So, just kind of see how things go throughout the year. You know, all of these 13 people won't get hired day 1. It'll take a little bit to find the right candidates to bring them in. So, just kind of reassess, probably towards the end of the year first, and see how things are going, making sure, you know, if Lowe's moves forward like they're thinking, opening somewhere around the holidays, maybe a little before, that could be good. You know, we could get ahead of that, the sales tax coming in, perhaps.
Yeah, I like that approach. I'm on board with that. Doing a strategy session to talk about that, talk about how we're going to implement the budget and big-ticket items, such as the AI software for development services and the fixed asset module and others, is going to be important. And that goes into, I guess, the final item that I would have is, adopting the budget is just, it's kind of step one. The next step is now, how do we proactively communicate as we're better together? How do we communicate with the public what we're doing with their dollars? And how do we keep them up to date throughout the year? So, working with our public information officer, Tammy, Alyssa, Rosie, you, I know we don't have a financial dashboard necessarily yet, but if there's ways that we can strategically communicate with the concept of the budget being better together to inform the public, here's how we're tracking on the goals, here's the benefits of the things that we've implemented. I know we do a really good job of that already. I just want to make sure that we continue to do that. So, just a few comments there. But that's all that I have for now. No deep dive in questions. We've had plenty of conversations around that over the past few meetings. So, any comment, Councilman Bonner?
Yeah, one of the things, you kind of hit on it a little bit, but I'd love for us to have a mid-year review of where we stand on the budget, instead of, we get bullet points, and I understand it's hard to do. But I'd love to see, right before we decide about, about can we spend more money, where are we at, and understanding that really, really well, more than just once a year. So, that's my one request. Again, like the mayor said, I think the staff did a wonderful job of listening to the council, and going and diving into those numbers, and finding out where we could move some things around and change the way that maybe we're doing stuff to where we could find the money within that without having to raise taxes to get the things we need. Now, the job becomes doing the same thing we've always tried to do, and I know y'all have done it pretty good, that we can always improve on spending the money wisely. And I think the way that you look at this, as far as, you know, do we need to spend this, I applaud that. That's what needs to be done across the board, and I know it does happen. But, you know, I like that. That's what we should be doing, trying to figure out, do we really need something? Is there a better option of doing something? You know, all those things go into us being able to have better things the next time around. So, I applaud everything that y'all are doing right now, and thank you for everything that you did.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other council comments or questions? I think Councilman Oplinger?
I've got a couple questions, thoughts. I agree. You know, one of the things that concerns me is we grow, and the need for people grows. You know, it's really hard to sit here, July, August, say, right before the budget, and say, oh, God, we need 20 more people. When we, you know, maybe we could start talking about that need earlier as we review the budget, right? Because it's, it makes it a hard decision to say, man, you know, what is, I get it that we're growing, right? But it's just really a tough pill to swallow, really big, when it's really late in the year. Now, look at that manager, Dan, you said 34 out of the 35 items. Are you going to get, is it 35 items on the spreadsheet? On page, what, 21 or whatever? Yeah.
I'm getting there. Let's see. Yeah, so there's 35 items, and the only one that's not included at all is item number 23. There's a-
Oh, okay, okay, that's what it is, okay.
Yes, sir.
So, everything else is a go?
Yes, sir. And if you recall, the last time, at the last meeting, we had looked at an idea for 2 million transfer from fund balance and a 3 million idea. So, the 3 million, the way you get there is you add 20, item number 23 in, and then the delta on item number 24 for Heritage Park.
Okay. All right. Very good. And then, one last thought, and it kind of echoes to the, and I don't know if we want to address changing the fund balance policy, right? But it would make me a lot more comfortable to address that earlier in the year than, again, right at the zero hour, right? It just sets better, that you're not changing your policy just to do something. Because policies and procedures only work when you use them all the time correctly, right? So, they, and I think that's how we got here with a solid fund balance, is following the process. So, if we're going to consider changing it, you know, hopefully, we could maybe at least throw it on the agenda earlier in the year to talk about it, if that's realistically what council wants to do. But that's it for me, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Mayor Protem Lands, did you have an item?
I just wanted to bring up-
If you can unmute yourself, sir.
Okay. I know it's still, you know, way down the road, but if we look at page 146, I think we ought to update that a little bit, just for the benefit of having it updated. I know, like I said, we're still not anywhere near doing it, but that's the old complex layout.
Yes, sir.
And it also, page 146. And it's still calling out a police station and a municipal court at that location. So, if we just tweak that a little bit, maybe, for the final?
Absolutely.
That's a good, good catch, Mayor Protem. Anyone else? Any other comments and/or questions? Okay. Hearing none, anything else from staff on this, these three agenda items? No? Okay. Moving on, agenda item number four. This is regarding the BCAD nominations. Dan, Tammy, you guys want to give us an overview of what we're looking at here?
So, in your packets, you have 10 applications. We put it out on social media. Some of them are people that each of you guys personally reached out to. Some of them are just people that saw the notice on Facebook. They've got their resumes in there. I think there's maybe one that we don't have a resume for, and that was, they had applied before we added that option for people to include the resumes. I can read off the listing of the names of the candidates. You're going to pick two of them to be submitted for the ballot.
Okay, awesome. And council, one of the things you'll see, and this is kind of a neat feature, Tammy, is on that first page, when you see all the different names, if you hover over one of the names, it highlights it. And if you click there, it'll actually take you to that person's submittal. I know, getting kind of fancy with it, huh? Woo! So, yeah, Tammy, if you just want to read us through the names real quick, that'd be great. And then, council, I know that this is, it was put in our agenda packets a little bit later today on Monday, well, I guess around 10:00 AM on Monday, but that's because we had the submittal period open until midnight on Friday. And so, when the team got in first thing on Monday, we got it uploaded. So, if you need a little bit of time to review, we're not making any decisions now during the workshops, so don't feel any pressure to do that. Tammy, go ahead.
So, you've got Rita Holman, and she is in the medical field. You've got Fidel Peters. He works for Talani Wong Engineers. Jason Jones, I did not have his career. Oscar Sarmiento, an electrician. Christina Verona, Chief Financial Officer. Lulu, yeah, Lawyer and Legal Contracts Manager. Nina Harrison, Employee Relations Advisor. Chelsea Lay, Real Estate Agent. Damon Collins, Registered Investment Advisor. And Cassie Chambers, a Real Estate Agent.
Awesome. Well, these, I did a brief review of the applications, and we've got some great, great candidates to choose between here. Some people that I lean towards is somebody that has expertise in the area of appraisals. So, you know, contracts management, real estate, engineering is where I lean to a little bit more when we look at all these great applicants. But council, any comments and/or questions for Tammy, or if you guys invited someone specifically to apply, please make sure to mention who they are?
Hi. Yeah, there were two names, Chelsea Lay and Casey Chambers. Those are two people specifically that I asked to apply.
Awesome. That's number eight and number 10. Perfect. Thank you, Councilwoman.
You all also have met one of those, Chelsea Lay, at the gala on Saturday.
Perfect. All right, council, we'll spend some time reviewing these, and we'll get to the agenda item, and then we'll be looking for a nomination. And if you'd like, we can nominate, what I would recommend is doing one at a time. So, we'll nominate one person, take a vote on that, nominate a second, and take a vote on that. And so, we'll have discussions after each nomination. All right, council, we'll move on to agenda item number five. This is regarding the library lease renewal. Manager Dan?
Yes, council, so this is, I guess, is it every year, or is it every three years that they've been updating?
So, it was three, when Robert took over the property from Mr. Salzar, it went to three-year agreements. Previous to that, it was a two-year agreement. So, this one is a renewal for the three years. It does have an increase in it. The past ones have had a yearly increase. This one, he did just a one-time. In the past, it'd been 5% per year increase. This one was a one-time 10% increase for the whole three years. And then everything else in the agreement has stayed the same as what it was.
Okay. So, over the past three years, we essentially had a 15% increase. But over the next three, we're locking ourselves in at 10, so it's going to be less of an increase we're projecting. Okay. Well, I know our library, our team at the library does a phenomenal job with the space that they have. They do excellent work. And what I would really, I'm, of course, we're going to, I'm going to vote for this, and we need to approve it. We need to make sure they have a building to operate. But what I would strongly ask is that we use these three years to get them a new space. Like, this is starting day 1, and we've got three years to find them something that is better suited for the service that they provide to our community. So, it's not a 30-day shot clock, it's a three-year shot clock, so we got some time. But I think if we go into it with approving it with that mindset, we do right by our library, right by our community for that. Council, any comments or questions regarding this agenda item?
Same thing, you, Mayor.
All right. Hearing none, we'll move on to number six. This is- This is regarding the water and wastewater impact fee report. But Dan, I believe that we're going to have somebody here presenting the agenda item.
They were going to, or they decided not to come because it was on the consent agenda whenever we did the draft, so hopefully, we can put our heads together and answer any questions that the council might have.
Okay. Can you explain why we have this on the agenda, what this item is?
Yes, sir. So is it twice a year that we're, the C I A C is supposed to basically report on, you know, if we're going to collect impact fees, then we have to make sure that if any of those impact fees that we're bringing in are actually getting spent on impact fee eligible projects. So it's really just a way to keep up with it. We have a group that I guess we might be in flux, right? We might have to either add or potentially change one of the members just because of some state law changes. But anyway, it's just basically an idea to, or, excuse me, a process to keep up with the impact fees. If gone unchecked, then you could, you know, who knows what could happen? So I know sadly, for many years, I don't think they met on a regular basis. In fairness, it used to be the Impact Advisory Committee was basically the same thing as P D and Z. Now it's not, as you know, y'all have selected a separate group called the Impact Fee Advisory Committee. So this is just their semi-annual report. I don't think they have to be certain months, it's just twice a year?
Twice, every six months.
Every six months, there you go. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, the same report that was presented to that board is in your packets. There's two different ones. One is a PowerPoint, and then the other one is more of just a PDF present update of the status and where the dollars have been spent and what the projects are still outstanding.
Perfect. Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Tammy. Council, any comments or questions regarding this agenda item?
Questions about the BCAD. If you can go back.
Okay, yeah, let's, we'll wrap up this agenda item, and then we'll jump back to the BCAD one. Just a few, and I had submitted some questions in advance. Dan, thank you to you and the team for getting most of them answered. I know that the 2021 study projected we would be at about 1,300 S U Es, and we're only at 827 now, so roughly 450 behind what we projected, which, you know, it's a projection, you never know for sure. Should that be any cause for concern that we're behind? Because a lot of the growth right now is in areas that aren't connected to the city system.
I agree. I think most of that could be attributed to Meridiana, which is not, you know, they're not impact fee eligible because they have their own water and sewer systems. So I think it's probably a combination of things. I know that we, years ago, we were having development meetings with folks, and they would talk about wastewater, and we could see, kind of see the end coming with our existing wastewater plant. So it could have been a cause for pause for some developments to want to come in on this, in this service area, knowing what they know now, knowing what we know now, that we're going to be, you know, going from only half a million gallons a day to a million and a half gallons a day for wastewater capacity, and then also the interlinking, I guess, or interconnecting of the three different water plants that we've got. We're just in a lot better situation now to handle development that is within the impact fee area. So I don't know, I don't know if it's a cause for pause, Mayor, it's certainly a shift timing-wise, so it's still going to come, it's just going to be later. I think the focus switched over to the south side of town in Meridiana than on this north side of town. But there's certainly synergy right now. I mean, if you look at where it's happening, everything is happening along Highway 6 and 288, which is absolutely our service areas.
Perfect. Thanks, Dan. And then several projects were listed as in progress. I know they didn't have anticipated completion dates. We've got some applied to them internally, but there's quite a few that are dependent upon Valencia. So if we could press them for some completion dates for those, so we could track against that, that'd be great. And then just wanted to publicly just say thank you for answering all my questions about the ones flagged as modified scope, so that was very helpful. Council, before we go back to BCAD, any other comments or questions regarding agenda item number six? Okay, hearing none, we will go back to agenda item number five. This is the BCAD item. Councilwoman Sarmiento.
Just a question on the addresses. Was this anybody that lives in Brazoria County, or did they have to live in Manville?
She's inside the county.
The county, okay. Thank you.
Good question. Thank you, Councilwoman.
A lot of them are not from Manville.
Correct. Okay, agenda item number seven. This is regarding residential parking, possibly direction to staff regarding some changes. It's not necessarily anything to vote on where we're adopting changes, just does council want to see some consideration for this? So to introduce the item, there was a resident of Rodeo Palms that had a very, they did a very creative job in parking their boat in their front yard. I need lessons from them about their backend skills, and the HOA reached out to us because while the HOA has the ability to apply restrictions on this, they do not have a quick process in order to require enforcement. And city code does not give us the ability to have any enforcement. So they were wondering if we would consider making changes to our code where we would apply it to zoning, where you could not front, park essentially a boat in the front yard. There's conversations, how does this impact rural people? Should this really be a city thing? You know, if the HOA has the ability and the HOA wants to restrict it, just leave it to the HOA. But there is a life and safety component of this that I know Dan and Chief will be able to speak into. So the main thing tonight is, do we want to see this move forward, kind of a checkpoint before any additional work's done on it? So Dan, Chief, I'll let you guys take it from here.
Yeah, Mayor, and I think that's a perfect, perfect introduction. So the first question is, would council like to pursue updating our ordinance? So Chief kind of took a cursory view, and actually, I think quite frankly nailed it. It can be simple, as far as ordinance goes, we can, we can take one of our existing ordinances and modify it to potentially capture what may, what council may be looking for, but we want to make sure this is what council's looking for before, you know, we have this converted into an ordinance, and we haven't gone to P D and Z or anything like that, right, Joes? Right. So this is, again, just an idea of what could be that's in your packet tonight. Chief, do you want to talk any more about that, or? See what they have to say. Let's see what they have to say first.
So I think the question, Council, is do you want to see within residential subdivisions any restrictions put on by the city on top of what the HOA may already have regarding people being able to park essentially, I guess, boats in their parking lot? That's really what this applies to, or is it recreational vehicles?
I think we have boats and trailers right now.
It's considered, the ordinance, we have a separate ordinance about boats and trailers, excuse me. Basically, what I did was I just added in there two definitions for, which we're still working on. I'm sorry, I don't have my computer with me, so it's doing updates.
You can't see with glasses.
Well, that's, so basically, what it is, we just created two definitions based off of a residential subdivision and a master plan community. The reason why we separated them out like that is if you look at Lakeland, by definition, it could meet, does not meet the requirements of a master plan community, it meets a residential subdivision. So, so we created the two definitions based off of that, which specifically, it just, the ordinance just says that you cannot park a boat or a trailer in a, the front yard of a residential subdivision or a master plan community. Now, how far do we want to go with that? It's, to me, if you want my personal opinion on it, I can give you two answers, whichever one y'all want to hear, but my personal opinion is, is this is something that I don't feel we need to really reach out and start digging into. We have ordinances that allow us to enforce on private property, which are junk vehicles or vehicles that are considered abandoned. As far as parking a boat in the front yard, to me, that should be an HOA. It's a covenant of the HOA. They should be the ones that are taking care of it. I know that this particular subdivision is doing their best that they can, what they have to work with, to try to keep the subdivision a nice-looking subdivision. And I really want to pat them on the back for doing what they're doing, but it seems like every time they have an issue or a problem, they reach out wanting us to create an ordinance to enforce their covenants. That's not, in my opinion, is what the city is here to do. But if that is what council wishes, and council wants to see this happen, we have this draft ordinance out there that we can look at, we can tweak, we can add, and again, it's ultimately up to council and their decision on what y'all want us to enforce. I think it should be what we call a complaint-based enforcement action, which means that I wouldn't have my code enforcement, because code enforcement would be the one enforcing it. They wouldn't be riding around looking for boats parked in yards. It would be based off a complaint, someone calls it in, they would go take action based off of that. But to start enforcing ordinances in somebody's private property could get a little bit sticky, except for like our abandoned vehicles, where you really have a detriment or something that really makes the area look bad. So that's my opinion on it. Again, it's the will of council, which I want to do. I will, we will, we will make whatever y'all want to happen, but we do have ordinances that are already in place for parking. And on a side note, I drove out there today, the boat's not there anymore. So it is, maybe the HOA letter worked, maybe it didn't, or it was just parked there for the weekend, and they didn't have a place to put it, they're cleaning it, they're doing whatever they need to do, but it would be, to me personally, as a boat owner, if I park it in my front yard to clean it after using it, and somebody calls and complains on it, I wouldn't be very happy about that. But if they're parking it there to store it there for an extended amount of time, that could be something that, that can be looked at as well. But to me, that is an HOA covenant that the HOA should be responsible for taking care of.
All right, thank you, Chief. And I think Manager Dan, you had something to add?
Yeah, I was just going to add maybe just a little bit of color to that. So one thing that the Chief added in the potential language, to kind of keep us, veer us away from the aesthetic part of it, I mean, if you want a boat in your front yard, that's, you know, that's kind of your thing, but the verbiage that he added in there potentially was, you know, in the front of a residence, not on a concrete driveway, or, this was the important part, or blocking the ingress or egress of the front of the residence. So I think that's kind of, if you wanted to do it, that might be more the rationale for it, you know? What if fire EMS or, you know, police or something couldn't get in through the front door, which, you know, at least from the pictures we saw, that the boat, literally, it was, it was blocking the front door. So just wanted to add that, Mayor.
Yeah, I appreciate that. That's where, that's where I would lean if we were to do anything, it would be towards that. If you have, you know, a half-acre community that's built, and you have a spot to park your boat on the side, why should I come in and restrict you from doing that? I think that's, that's an overbearing process of your private property rights. Now, the life and safety piece, and blocking a door, blocking that access, that would be the concern if there's an emergency. So if we were to do anything, that's where I would lean, but Chief, to your point, if the HOA has covenants, and you've chosen to live inside an HOA community with those covenants, and they have, they do have an enforcement mechanism, it's a little bit longer of a process, but it is a process that does, that does work. And one of the things that I've heard from people in Manville as we grow is they don't want us to become a citywide HOA, and we need to be very cautious of that because we have a diversity of opinions and thoughts in the city that we straddle that line. How do you, how do you represent it? So maybe there's a way to do that with this, but I want to hear, would love to hear council's thoughts, comments, questions. I will go. Councilman Rossi Knox.
How many times has this happened in the past many years?
This is the first time I've heard of it.
Okay, see, there's not, if it was a continual problem happening often, I would say actions needed, but if it's a one-off, and it's gone too, so.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Opliger?
Yeah, I live in the rural section, but it's a subdivision, small subdivision. Well, you know, I've got trailers, boats, you know, stuff parked, so that would be, you know, but it is what it is, right? Now, also, in the lake communities, I've seen deed restrictions where it specifically says, if you have water craft of any kind, it must be parked on concrete, right? In the driveway, period. So it can go, I just don't want to see anything that's going to impact the rural folks like that, because, you know, that's why you buy a lot of land to put stuff on it, this kind of thing, but.
Chief.
Some of the language in the definitions, and we can, we can actually, if this is the direction we want to go, it's something we can actually tweak, but it actually breaks it down, and I agree with that. So one of the things that we didn't want to do was to affect these houses on the one-acre tracks, the five-acre tracks, because, you know, honestly, it's, it's more of like in these residential subdivisions where you're, you're on a half-acre or a quarter an acre, and you put in a 20-foot pontoon boat, which, you know, when I actually drove by there, I'm sitting there looking at it, and I was kind of amazed how they got that boat up in there. If you look at the pictures, it's completely different, because I'm going, there is no way that they got that boat up in there. But the pictures show it did. But if it was one of those things where it, they were storing it there all winter long out of boat season, I could see an issue with it. But, you know, if they're just bringing it home to do what they need to do, clean it up, spruce it up, and then get it out of there, that's a different story. So, you know, one of the things we can look at, or it's kind of like our abandoned vehicle ordinance, or state loaned abandoned vehicle, has to be there for a certain amount of time before we start taking action on it. That's something else we can look at, you know, if we deem to go this way, but, you know, it's, it's like the HOAs, they do have mechanisms in place for it, and of course, you know, and that's one of the concerns was, I think the city, it takes 60 days to get something done through the HOA, through the state, but, you know, it's kind of like the wheels of justice. The wheels of justice turn slow, but they do turn. And, you know, if it's something here that they're storing out there for an extended amount of time, that's what they need to focus on, not a short-term event.
Thank you, Chief. Councilman Bonner?
Yeah, I'm, I'm in agreement. I'm totally against making the city do the jobs of HOAs. I don't think anybody wants to see that done here in the city. The only changes that I'd, I'd be in favor of are the ones that deal with safety aspect. Other than that, I just don't think that's our job. I understand more than anybody probably about HOAs and the slowness. We have some issues in my neighborhood that they take forever, but there is a, there is a way to take care of them. You just may not like the speed they move, but I'm not a big HOA fan, but I think in this case, we don't need to become one either.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments or questions?
None on that topic.
Okay. So I think, Council, for this one, when we get to the agenda item, the general consensus is maybe we hold off on taking any action here for this one, we see if it comes up more of an issue in the, in the future. Chief, if you guys do feel like it's prudent to bring forward something around the life and safety aspect, talk with your team, you know, we'll rely on your expertise there, but regarding a more broader swoop, the general consensus is to hold on that for now. Now, if you guys start getting more complaint calls, and you start to see this happening more, please let us know. Good with that, Council? Okay. All right. Last agenda item to run through, and then, Council, we can take a break, and then we'll pick back up here at 6. This is agenda item number eight, which is regarding, I think, a right-of-way behind Redeemer Church. Looks like the last time this was before us was in 2024. So Joes, can you give us a run-through of this agenda item?
Yes, Mayor and Council. So this is a request for a right-of-way abandonment. The right-of-way exists south of Redeemer Church. There's a couple of other vacant tracks that's along this one, and it extends from Iowa Lane to the railroad tracks. And last year, when they had submitted the request, they were not able to get a letter of no objection from Center Point, because Center Point had some transmission lines in that area, and there was a segment which kind of intersected with the right-of-way, and they needed more information, and they were looking into making sure that their infrastructure is still within the right-of-way. And since then, the applicant has been working with Center Point Energy, and what happened eventually is that the applicant changed their request to exclude a certain portion of the right-of-way, which is within Center Point's transmission line and their easement, so that they don't have to work with them in getting an easement for Center Point. And so they've modified their request to reduce the length of the right-of-way being abandoned. And as a result of that, Center Point Energy has issued a letter of no objection to that revised request. But what that does is, now we're in a situation where there is a portion of right-of-way within, towards the, closer to the railroad track, which is not, not being abandoned, and it's just going to stay there as a right-of-way. And one of the challenges being that even for city to access that portion, city won't, I mean, there won't be any easements through which we can access it. So that's not like generally the best practice, but in this situation, one of the things is like the portion of right-of-way that's being, that is excluded, is part of the Center Point transmission line area, so that area wouldn't have any other use as well. That's what the applicant has informed us or told us to justify their approach of excluding that portion. That is all.
Awesome. Thanks, Joes. Any comments? Awesome. Thanks, Joes. Any comments or questions from Council regarding this agenda item?
No.
No? Okay.
So we're giving them some money back.
Councilman Oplager asked a question, so we're giving them some money back then?
Yes, I believe Redeemer Church had accrued some money for the construction of the right, street within this right-of-way. So if the right-of-way is abandoned, that, that money would go back to them, depending on how the right-of-way is appraised and how all of that transaction is decided.
Good question, Councilman. I believe Councilwoman Sarmiento, you had an item that you want to go back to?
Just a topic, something else that's not on here. I don't see it on here. I reached out to some of the officers about the calls and, I guess, the citizens that are upset about the trailers that are being parked off of the entrance and exit ramps of, of the freeway. And I talked to a couple of people saying that basically they're using it as a parking lot. And so it's, it's frustrating people. It's a safety issue at night. There's no lighting. So apparently it's a TechDOT thing, but where, at what point can we get into this to make sure that we make that safe and, and eliminate what's happening there?
I think during our, let's jump to the city manager update portion of our agenda. And Dan, if you can give us a, let's just run through your city manager update right now. And I know that there was a great meeting with TechDOT this afternoon.
Sure. There was actually a, a meeting with TechDOT today with the, the Chief and myself and the Mayor and Public Works. And one of the topics of, of concern was 18-wheelers, tractor trailers and whatnot parking along the feeder road of 288, as it turns out.
Yeah.
And, yeah, so there, there's a process for it. And basically, we just, we're going to work on an ordinance to bring back to Council. And most likely, what we'll do is that ordinance can say that you can't park on any of the feeders in, in Manville essentially. And then TechDOT will come out and they'll put the signs wherever we, wherever we ask them. So we don't want to litter our whole 288, you know, corridor with a bunch of signs, but kind of where we're having the issues is where we start with the signs. And they'll put them out for us. They just need an ordinance from us, so.
Awesome. Perfect. Thank you. Thanks, Chief, for that. I appreciate it.
Great timing.
Perfect. Thank you. That was weighing on my mind. I lost sleep over it, as you can tell.
All right, Council.
Thanks, guys.
Well, what we'll do here, since we've run through the agenda items, we will take a break at 5:50, unless there's any other, Dan and team, any other items on the agenda that you guys would like to talk about? Council, any other items from you guys on the agenda? Okay, so we'll take a break here and let's reconvene at 6 o'clock. Thank you.
The City Council work, or regular meeting to order here at 6:02 PM. We are all present. We have two people that will be joining us momentarily. And Byron nods his head to that. We're going to start off with the invocation here. And usually I invite one of our local pastors or community members to lead us in the invocation. But in light of everything that we saw happen over this past week, I wanted to take a moment to lead us in prayer here. And when the disciples in the Bible, when they asked Jesus how to pray, he taught them, and we all know it as the Lord's Prayer. And if you happen to know this prayer, I would appreciate you guys saying it with me tonight. And when we say this prayer, we say this not just over our own lives or over our city and state, but over our entire nation. We pray that God heals this land, that he brings revival to America. And even though we seem so divisive, there's a lot more that unites us. And it's an opportunity for us over these coming days and months to really focus on that. So if you will, please bow your head, close your eyes. And if you feel led to, please say this prayer with me. Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory, forever and ever. Amen. Thank you. Crystal says, and now in Spanish. I'll leave that one up to you. I'll leave that one up to you. Next, we have the inspirational reading from Councilmember Opelgar.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody. The, for tonight, we went to the Alvin School District 100 year celebration. And I was thinking about teachers and educators. And I know there's a couple really great educators in this room. And then, you know, and in life, and whether we're mentoring somebody, the new guy on the job or whatever, this really kind of fits, especially for the teachers. But here we go. The mediocre teacher tells, the good teacher explains, the superior teacher demonstrates, yet the great teacher inspires. That's it.
Thank you, Councilman. I like that. If you can, please stand and join me in saying the pledges.
First to the U.S. flag. Pledge to the flag of the United States of America. Enter the revolution, one nation under God, indivisible, the living, the just, and the free. To the Texas flag. On the Texas flag, a pledge to be Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, everyone. We have a presentation tonight, which is a proclamation for National Mexican Heritage Month, which is September 15th through October 15th. And we are actually going to have our Councilwoman Crystal Sarmiento read this proclamation tonight.
Thank you. My guests aren't here yet. I guess that 288 traffic did them in.
Would you like for us to come back to this, Crystal, do you think?
I think so. I mean, would you guys agree that we should probably, when should we do that, though?
Whenever they get here, we'll wrap up the agenda item that we're on, and then we'll circle back to this. So you can keep that there with you for-
Five minutes? Okay.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll just hold on the proclamation presentation until a few minutes from now. What we'll do instead is we will jump into the public hearing. So as this goes, I will read off the public hearing. We will then open it up to anybody wishing to speak on the subject of this public hearing. So we'll do first call, second call, third call. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand. And then we will have you come forward, state your name and address for the record, and the floor will be yours. So this public hearing is to hear inputs on the 2025 tax year proposed property tax rate. A tax rate of 58 cents per $100 evaluation has been proposed by the governing body of the City of Manville. Proposed tax rate 58 cents per 100, no new revenue rate is 53 cents per 100, voter approval tax rate is 61 cents per 100. The proposed tax rate is not greater than the voter approval tax rate. As a result, the City of Manville is not required to hold an election at which voters may accept or reject the proposed tax rate. We will open up this public hearing at 6:07 PM. And we will do the first call for anybody wishing to speak on the subject of this public hearing, second call, and third call. Hearing none, we will close the public hearing at 6:07 PM. And we will move on to the public comments section of the meeting. We have two speaker participation forms that have been submitted. And so I will read the first one out. When I read your name, if you can please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and then you will have three minutes to speak. You will see the timer here on the sides, and then the confidence monitor here in the front of the screen. So the first speaker that we have signed up to speak is Jackie Lowry. And Jackie, please take your time, no rush. And then the next speaker that we have signed up, just to get the queue ready, is Katie Smith. So we'll have you come forward next. Ms. Jackie, thank you for being here tonight.
Yes, I'm speaking on behalf of the intersection at Jordan and Merida, Meridiana Parkway. How dangerous it is. There have been four wrecks there already. And there is a curve coming from Highway 6 going to Meridiana that you cannot see a car coming. And the same is coming from Meridiana down to 6. There is a curve there, and there's trees all there, and you cannot see a car coming. January the 18th, I was going to Walmart, excuse me, and there is a stop sign on one side of Jordan and on the other side of Jordan. I stopped at the stop sign. There was a truck coming down from 6 going to Meridiana. I stopped, it passed, there was no other cars coming. I looked down towards Meridiana, there was no car coming anywhere down there. I started across the intersection, I got past the intersection, was almost to the other side of Jordan, and this car came around and hit me from, from coming from Meridiana, swerved me around and put the car in the ditch, the big, one of those big ditches, and was taken to the hospital where they found my neck was broken. And I was in the hospital and rehab and back in the hospital for surgery. And so I just want to know why we cannot have a four-way stop sign or a traffic light there. If you go on down into Meridiana, if there is an intersection like we have there, they have a four-way stop sign. You go on down a little further in Meridiana, and they have a traffic light. So I was just wondering, we need a four-way stop sign or a traffic light there before someone gets killed.
Well, Ms. Jackie, thank you for being here tonight. How are you feeling? I see that you're still wearing the brace.
Well, I had a brace, a big steel brace on for five months. And then I've been, no, four months, excuse me. And then I've been in this brace for five months. And I have always been independent since my husband passed away 30 years ago. And that one wreck has changed my life completely. I can't drive anymore. My car was totaled. Plus, I can't turn my neck from left to right, so I can't drive. So I have to rely on other people that I've never had to do before. And it's all simply because, and I went down to City Hall once before all this happened and complained about it, and nothing was ever done. So I don't want someone else to have to go through what I've gone through with surgeries and all this other stuff.
Absolutely. Well, thank you for being here and advocating for that. We're not able to have a lot of discussion about it during this portion of the meeting. But what I'd like to make sure we do is Chief and Dan, if we can get Ms. Jackie's contact information, and I know there's a process we have to follow when we change intersections, and let's make sure that we will get in contact with you and we'll talk with you about this further.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackie. We really appreciate you being here, and we'll be praying for you as you continue your recovery. The next speaker participation form, and then we'll go back to the proclamation, Councilwoman, is we will go to Katie Smith. Katie, thank you for being here tonight. And it looks like you have some updates for us regarding the library programming.
Yes, sir. So first off, my name is Katie Smith. My address is 10421 Russell Pine Drive, Iowa Colony. I'm representing the Manville Library located at 2514B Highway 6 in Manville, Texas. I'm coming before y'all because we had a very successful summer. Typically, I like to come like toward the end, right at the end of summer, tell you how everything went. We had some staff turnover. Things been kind of chaotic, so unfortunately delayed me a little bit. But I want to say this has been the most successful summer program that the Manville Public Library has ever had in its entire history. As you can see on one of our forms, it has the little chart on it there. It has the numbers of every monthly program, or our program numbers for every month since January of 2022, when we started keeping the numbers in the method that we're keeping them today. Before then, if I try to compile the numbers, they come out weird, so bear with me on that. But you can see that our summer reading program, which would be '06 and '07 of 2025, have far exceeded almost every other month that we have had in that period. This month's, this year's programs have been so successful that we have actually reached the fire marshal limits numerous occasions during library programming and had to cease library function in order to run the program, which in itself can be considered a problem, but it's also a measure of success. If we're capping out big numbers, that means that we're doing a great job. This is also happening at bigger libraries like West Pearland, so it is something that's to be admired. The other form that I gave y'all is a monthly, it's the little monthly manager's notice that I send out every year. These are also on the manager's report that comes out, and it's sent by every month. But I just want to kind of show y'all just the number increases overall for the library just in this one-year span for the month of July. And I know that we said, just mentioned, the library lease coming up and everything, looking for a new space. I think that's absolutely fantastic. But I just want to say, we're doing great, and I just appreciate y'all letting me come up here and talk to y'all.
Thank you for all that you do. These are incredible numbers. You guys are killing it there. And we're very excited about the potential of getting you guys a bigger and beautiful space in the near future, hopefully. So thank you for these numbers. Appreciate all that you do.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
All right, Council, what I would like to do now, if you guys are good with it, is we'll go back to the presentation portion of the meeting. And so we have a proclamation to issue for National Mexican Heritage Month. And so, Councilwoman, if you'll join me in the front here, and I believe that you have some guests that you'd like to introduce to us.
Yes, we do. Thank you. Oh, you sure you want to give me this? All right, so we are going to be doing a proclamation. Really, it's from the office of the mayor, so he should be doing this. But we're going to honor my parents, Margarita and Apolinar De Leon, because they are the foundation of our Mexican-American heritage. Although the proclamation is for Hispanic Month, Observation of Hispanic Month. So if you guys would come up here, and my husband, because he's a Hispanic. I don't, not sure if y'all can tell, except he's Colombian and Texan. Hello, husband.
Did I give a gift?
Yes. All right, so I have to put my glasses on to read this. Es mucho. Okay, lo que voy a leer, pero es en inglés. All right, so I can't translate this on the fly. Okay, whereas, from September 15th to October 15th, the United States celebrates National Hispanic Heritage Month, a time to honor the rich heritage, history, traditions, and cultural diversity of Hispanic Americans whose heritage is rooted in Spain and 19 countries and territories, including Mexico. Mexico, Mexico-Americans whose heritage, oh, sorry, my eyeballs. Okay, including Mexico, Guatemala, Honduras, El Salvador, Nicaragua, Costa Rica, Panama, Colombia, Venezuela, Ecuador, Peru, Bolivia, Paraguay, Chile, Argentina, Uruguay, Cuba, Puerto Rico, and the Dominican Republic. That one's in English. All right. And whereas, this 30-day observance is uniquely timed to highlight the anniversaries of independence for several Latin American nations, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua on September 15th, Mexico on September 16th, and Chile September 18th, as well as Dia de la Raza, Columbus Day, Indigenous Peoples' Day, mid-October. Phew, we have a lot of celebrations. And whereas, the origins of Hispanic Heritage Month trace back to 1968, when President Lyndon B. Johnson was proclaimed, first proclaimed Hispanic Heritage Week, which was later expanded to a month-long celebration by President Ronald Reagan in 1988 and enacted into law through public law 100 through 402. And whereas, each year, the President of the United States issues a proclamation to recognize National Hispanic Heritage Month, and the National Council of Hispanic Employment Program managers leads the development of the annual theme and commemorative poster used nationwide. And whereas, the City of Manville proudly joins in this national observance to celebrate the enduring contributions of Hispanic Americans who have enriched our community through leadership, through service, arts, education, business, and culture, strengthening the fabric of our society. Now therefore, him, Dan Davis, by the virtue vested in him as the mayor of the City of Manville, Texas, does hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th, 2025, National Hispanic Heritage Month. And I am so proud to have you guys here, because without you, none of you would we be here. So thank you. You hand it to them. So I want to say a few words. So we'll start with this amazing woman, Margarita De Leon. She has been an educator for cuantos años?
49 years.
49 years. Cuantos en México?
23.
23.
And 26 in Houston.
23, sorry, I shouldn't be doing this. 23 years taught in Mexico, and then 26 in Houston. So when we talk about education and immigrants and immigration coming to this country and serving, this is the epitome of that. So thank you. I love you.
Love you.
And then my father here started his entrepreneurial endeavors. How old were you, Dad? Or what year, how many years ago did you start your business here?
Since, like 50 years ago.
50 years ago. Does he look like he's been doing that for 50 years?
Yeah, I'm already almost 70.
He humbly says that. But this is, this is the fabric of national Hispanic heritage, is coming to this country, giving back, serving, and working hard. And that is, that is why we do what we do, and we celebrate you. So thank you. Any words, Mayor? Yes, you do. Please, please.
We appreciate you guys. You guys have raised a powerful daughter here who is making a big difference in the community with the support of her husband and her kids. And so thank you for blessing us with her, and thank you for your years of service to our country. We are a melting pot as a nation, and all of us working together, we are better together, and we appreciate both of you. So I think we'll take a photo together here. Do we have someone?
I just want to say thank you to this beautiful, I want to say thank you to this beautiful country that is the best country in the world. I have, my country's in Mexico, but this country give me a house, a house. Give me my son, my daughter, my granddaughters, my grandsons. And I'm very proud to live in this beautiful country, and God bless America forever and ever.
Amen. God bless America. All right. Thank you, everyone. We will now go to the city manager updates. So, Dan, if you can fill us in on a few things, I know you've got some for us, and also just do a refresher about what you shared during the workshop, too.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. So, one thing, first thing I want to tell you about is signed the notice to proceed for the public works facility today. So, yeah, very excited about that. So, September 22nd, no, next Monday is whenever they're supposed to get started, Flint Co., that is. Very exciting about that. Starting tomorrow, we'll enter staff and I guess myself as well, we'll enter into the performance review season. So I think we were giving the team till the end of this month to do their self-evaluation. And then that'll give us basically the month of October for the supervisors to sit down with each one of their employees. So we hope to have all those done by the end of October, right, Jim? So we revamped, just to let you know, we've revamped our performance evaluation sheet just a little bit. And so some of the terms that we had before were very, very close, but not quite in alignment with our core values. So we had excellence instead of quality and those kind of things. So anyway, we've revamped that. So the first seven categories on our performance evaluations are our first seven core values. So I'm really excited about that. Anyway, so that starts tomorrow. Couple of reminders, we've got the Fall Music Festival, of course, coming up on October 18th. All looking well so far, so good. I think we have one other little hurdle. We're going to visit with the county, I believe, next week to see about potentially closing Croy Parkway, the road that goes, say, from Croy Road up into Pomona. Because we're, as you know, we're using New Hope Church's parking lot for the bulk of parking, there'll be shuttles going back and forth. So if that little stretch of road is closed up to Croy Park and some folks decide to walk it or whatever, then it'd just be safer, yes. So, Lisette's doing a great job being our sort of staff liaison for the Fall Music Festival. Then the State of the City, speaking of New Hope Church, we're looking, most likely the State of the City is going to be November 5th at New Hope Church as well. So, big, that's a, that's a big accomplishment, I think. You know, we've, we've had it a couple of different churches over the years, we've had it, churches not even in Manville. We've had it many places not in Manville. So, you know, someday, one day, we'll have our very own facility that will be big enough to have our own State of the City, but we're not quite there just yet. Anyway, that's November 5th, that's a, that's a Wednesday, the week before Veterans Day. And the other thing I wanted to mention was the RFQ for the city center idea, the 160 acres, I should say. So after we get over the hump of budget, that's going to be the next big project is working on an RFQ that will go out for the P3, the public-private partnership concept for the 160 acres. Already got a few examples that we can use of what other cities have done, sort of how to formulate that RFQ. We've done plenty of RFQs over the years, but obviously not for a P3. If, if that potentially, if that works, you know, which it sure seems like it should, if we, if council and if we all like the process, perhaps that's an idea to go down with a library, you know, even, you know, maybe there are other opportunities where we can look at that, that mechanism. So tonight, like you said, Mayor, we do have the budget on our agenda tonight, even though we had no public input at 58 cents, that's not what we're proposing, that was part of the public hearing. The budget document that has been prepared, that's in the, in the packet, is at 56 cents. And we can, I guess, talk about the particulars of it, but I think that's all for tonight, Mayor.
And then, Manager Dan, there was one item you covered in the workshop as a part of the city manager update. Can you just, that's about the 288 parking?
Yes, yes. So our next step, we did, we had our regular meeting with TechStot today at 2:00 PM, and that was one of the items that we brought up was the concern, well, there were two things on 288, that's not true, three things on 288. One is these, the lights that are supposed to go at Rodeo Palms and Del Bello, 288. And so I think they're on the home stretch with Center Point to get lighting there, to get the lights going there at that intersection. The other one was, I guess, a week or two ago, there was an issue where a contractor was dumping water directly onto the feeder roadside ditch, and that was obviously causing some pretty big concerns for people. I mean, it was literally flooding the feeder road. So we were able to jump in and help, actually help TechStot figure out who that was and get the contractor to stop doing that. And then the third one was, I guess we're seeing some tractor trailers, some 18-wheelers that are parking on the feeder roads on 288. And so we talked to TechStot about that today, and there's a process for it. Basically, what we'll do is we'll work on the ordinance, if, bring that back to you probably in the next meeting, Chief. And so, once we have the ordinance and we've approved the ordinance, council's approved the ordinance, then we let TechStot know and then TechStot will actually put out the no parking signs and then we can enforce it if anybody is still violating that.
Perfect. Thank you, Dan.
Yes, sir.
Moving on to the consent agenda, council, any comments or questions regarding the consent agenda? Hearing none, do I have a motion? Okay, so we'll give the motion to Councilman Oplager, the second to Councilman Bonner, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously 6 to 0. We will now move on, we have no items removed from the consent agenda, we'll move on to the regular agenda. Agenda item number one is consideration and possible action to approve on first reading ordinance 2025-0-28. Manager Dan, can you give us an overview?
Yes, sir. As we've been talking about for months now, this is the fiscal year budget for fiscal year 2026. The new fiscal year will start October 1. And so you've had all of the presentations from the directors over the last couple of months. We've had the opportunity to go through and project what we think property taxes and revenues and miscellaneous revenues will look like, and combine that with all of the expenditures that we know that we'll have, plus the new things that we know that our directors believe it will take to keep the same level of service for our citizenry for next year. Included in this budget are 13 new positions across, I guess, three different departments, and also about 34 supplemental items, different, different things that, from vehicles and equipment to AI-assisted plan review software, so some pretty exciting things that we really think are going to help us out. Also, a cost of living adjustment of 3% for all of our employees. So, yeah, the budget document is ready for you tonight. Again, it's based on 56 cents, I just want to say that again out loud, it's 56 cents. If they're, well, just for anybody that's watching, if they, you know, they see the 58 in the public hearing, the, again, just kind of reading the tea leaves, really trying to listen to what we've been hearing from council over the last several meetings, we thought that that was where y'all wanted to go. So if it's not, then now's the time. If you like 56 and you like everything that's been prepared, aside from those couple of things that we talked about in the workshop, updating a capital improvement project that shows the old city center idea on page 146. And then whenever Councilman Lanz brought that up, I noticed that on page 150, Heritage Park is shown to be paid for out of the general obligation bond, which is not correct, that needs to be moved to. So we'll change those two pages when we finalize this tonight.
Perfect. Thank you, Dan. Well, I'll start us off in saying thank you to staff for the work, council, thank you for your work on this budget, thank you to the community for the work and the feedback that I've received on the budget. I think it's an amazing thing to see that we're able to do so much while keeping the tax rate flat at a historic rate of 56 cents. When we see a lot of government entities in our area that are raising the tax rate or having to dip into their fund balance just to pay the bills on a week-to-week basis, to be able to keep our fund balance at 159 days, which is about five and a half months, when most cities keep it at about just three months, means that we're prepared for emergencies and we've leveraged growth to get us to that point while funding and investing in our employees, a 3% cost of living increase, getting the equipment that's needed to streamline processes and be more efficient, while also understanding that a growing city, and even an aging city, has a lot of needs and we need to hire the right team members and put them in the right position to do that. So, appreciate everyone's work on this, I am in support of this budget tonight, and it's a testament for the process. As Councilman Oplager says, we got to put the process in place, follow the process. We started with budget presentations from our department heads in June, we started to have discussions about the shape of the budget really in the beginning of August, we had a special meeting, thanks to Mayor Pro Tem Lanz, that we were able to work through it more and really dive into the numbers. And it was a budget that this process really showed us the title, which we're better together. And when we keep communicating and we keep collaborating, we'll reach the other side and at a better place. So thank you to everyone for your work on this. Council, any comments and/or questions before we vote on this agenda item? We have a comment from Councilwoman Sarmiento.
Yeah, I think that I'm super proud of, of really the entire team. We've all lost sleep, gone line by line. In my heart, I really wanted to just sign the check and say, yes, let's move forward, we have a lot of needs, especially staff, equipment, all the things. But I just want to give you guys so much praise because I know how difficult it is to be conservative when it comes to our finances, but also balance the delicate needs that we have with what, you know, what it's like to balance the budget, but also have our constituents happy, our citizens happy, that what we're doing is the right thing, the right path forward. So with that a long spiel, I just wanted to say thank you guys, really thank you for that. I wish we were at a place where we could adopt a lower rate or, you know, we're just not there yet. And I'm just really thankful for my fellow council members because I feel like we've all been diligent with asking the right questions, deep diving in and balancing, you know, the needs that we have and, and really seeing it as leaders, not just elected officials, right? So, thank you guys for that. And I wish we were dropping it, like I said, but I'm in support of this and hopefully next year, we'll be able to add more, more people and milk the sales tax. Just say that out loud again. Get more sales tax revenue. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other comments from council? I'll just encourage the public, there's been a lot of public conversations about this during the workshop, past meetings. If you have questions, please go back and look at those meetings. We did do a Budget Town Hall that is posted on YouTube in the city's Facebook page that you can go back and watch. And if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to us as council, reach out to staff, we'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you have. With that, do I have a motion for this agenda item? We have a motion to approve as presented by Councilman Bonner. We have a second from Councilman Garrett Rossi Knox, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously 7 to 0. Well, we're not there yet. We got, we got, we got two more here, two more items here.
I know, I know.
So, we have a consideration and possible action to ratify the property tax increase reflected in the 2026 fiscal year budget that was just adopted that raises more property taxes than the fiscal year 2025 budget. Dan, Rosie, Tammy, I know this one is, can you guys kind of present this item? It reads a little odd, so kind of explain the way that it reads, and then I know we have a very specific motion we need to make.
So this one here is just a regular motion. It does read a little bit odd. What you're actually doing is approving the property tax increase that it took for the budget you just adopted. So that one's just a regular vote and a regular motion. It's the next one that's going to be the special motion that I gave you the language for.
Okay. Thank you, Tammy. So, just as a clarification, the property tax is remaining flat at 56 cents. It's because of new property that's been added to the tax rule and people potentially seeing an increase in their appraisals, that this is why it represents as a property tax increase. But I know for many people, they are seeing property taxes decrease because they've protested their appraisals, I know quite a few. And so the tax rate is remaining flat. Council, any comments and/or questions about this agenda item? Hearing? No, roll call will be the next one. Yep. Do I have a motion for this agenda item?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Councilman Oplager. Do I have a second? We have a second from Mayor Pro Tem Lanz, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously 7 to 0. Next, we have consideration and possible action to approve on first reading ordinance 2025-0-29, and this is just the ordinance to put in place the levy of the property tax rate at 56 cents. Is that correct, Tammy? Okay. So, council, I have a very specific motion that I need to read for this one. So I will go ahead and make the motion, we'll need a second for it. This will be a roll call vote going from left to right, starting with Councilman Bonner. And this does require a supermajority, which means we need five people to vote in favor of it. So I would like to make a motion that the property tax be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 56 cents, which is effectively a 6.44% increase in the tax rate. The tax rate consists of .31980 cents for maintenance and operations and .2402 cents for debt service as reflected in ordinance 2025-0-29 to adopt the municipal tax rate for tax year 2025. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Bonner, this will now be a roll call vote. Councilman Bonner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Lanz?
Yes.
Councilman Oplager?
Yes.
Mayor Davis, I am a yes. Councilmember Robie Robinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sarmiento?
Yes.
Councilmember Rossi Knox? Motion passes unanimously 7 to 0. Now, the budget process, now we can clap if you want to clap, the budget process is complete.
I just hate the way we have to say we raised it.
It's a weird, it's a weird reading. It's keeping the tax rate flat, but it is a weird reading, yes, Mayor. And then I know, as we discussed in the workshop here, within October to early November, we'll have a strategy session, we'll talk about how we implement the budget, fulfill the items, plan for the future, look at some of those items. So, thank you, staff, for all of your hard work. We will now move on to agenda item number four, this is consideration and possible action to, no, this is consideration and possible action to approve resolution 2025-r-35. Council, we did talk about this during the workshop, this is regarding the appraisal district board appointments. You will see in your packets those who applied to be considered for this position. Keep in mind, it cannot be anybody related to you or working for the city, there are some requirements for it. So we will be looking for two nominations, I'd like to take them one at a time. So we'll vote on one nomination first and then we'll vote on the second nomination. But before we do that, we'll open it up for any discussion regarding the first nomination. So, any comments and/or questions, council?
The first nomination?
Yep.
Does anybody know this first nominee?
We don't have to...
When you say nomination?
Nomination. So when you take, yeah, so when you take a look at the list, is there anybody that you guys would like to focus on for consideration on this list based off of your review of the applicants? I know Councilwoman Robie Robinson had brought forward someone.
I, um...
So I think, Councilwoman Robie Robinson, one of the people that you had brought forward was Chelsea Lay, who's a real estate, a real estate agent, that's someone that you would like us to focus on.
Yes, so Chelsea Lay, she's been living in the Manville community for about five years with her husband and four-year-old daughter. She's a real estate agent and she specialized in the Manville, Brazoria County, Alba Colony, you know, surrounding area. She's also a vice president of the Jack and Jill Brazoria County chapter. And she also does Suburban Eats with me, where we highlight local businesses in the suburbs, just trying to bring more traction their way, you know, free of charge, and we just do that in our spare time. But she's very much invested in Manville and I think that, and also she actually protests yeah, property taxes increases, that's something else she offers. So I know that she would be a really good candidate, I know she's ambitious, she'll ask all the right questions, she won't just, you know, go with what comes in before her. And I think she would be great, she's very personable and, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman. And then, Councilwoman, if you also want to speak to the other person that you know that applied, that you'd like to bring forward as a recommendation, Cassie Chambers?
Yeah, Casey Chambers. So she's lived in the Manville community for eight years. She's a real estate broker and agent, and her husband also owns a Goosehead Insurance Company in Periland, so they are very much invested in the Brazoria County area. She has two adorable twins in fourth grade who go to Pomona Elementary and they just got elected for vice president and president of their class. And so I just want to say her leadership runs very deep in their family and I think she would represent us very well. And, yeah, oh, and she's Girl Scouts, I'm trying to remember the title, but it's like one of those high titles, I can't think of it right now, but she would be a great addition as well.
Awesome. Thank you, Councilwoman. We have a lot of great applicants here and those two definitely sound like great applicants. Council, are there any others that you'd like to bring forward for consideration on this list that stand out to you?
I do.
Yes, Councilwoman?
I'm looking at some of the applicants here and one that is strikingly impressive is Nina Harrison. And she's also resident of Manville, which I'm in favor of, having residents of Manville represent us, although I know it's countywide. I just, I love her resume here. I love that she went into detail explaining why she would be a good fit and her professional experience. She says she has strong analytical communication and decision-making skills, which would support the board's mission of ensuring accuracy, transparency, and accountability in the appraisal process. She values the importance of making public trust, of maintaining public trust and is prepared to dedicate the time and effort necessary to carry out the responsibilities. Now, I know we've heard that this is probably not a very active role, however, I think that this mindset and the experience of this person would prove one that would challenge anything or would be a great voice for the community when representing BCAD. And that's just my analysis of all the, the people who have applied.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Do you know Ms. Nina personally or just stood out to you there?
Yes, it stood out to me.
Okay, great. So we have three there that have brought forward for consideration. Any others that stand out to you, council? Okay. So now that we have three for two positions, what we'll do is we'll take a vote, one vote at a time for each of them to see. And so we have to fill two spots, so I will entertain a motion for whoever wishes to speak first for the first of the two positions.
I would like to nominate Chelsea Lay.
Okay.
For number one.
Number one. So we have a motion for Chelsea Lay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilman Bonner, all those in favor of Chelsea Lay, please raise your hands.
She's the Jack and Jill one.
All right. So we have, that motion passes unanimously, so Chelsea will be one of our two nominations. And now we'll be looking for the second nomination.
I will nominate Nina.
Okay. We have a nomination for Ms. Nina. Do I have a second for Ms. Nina? We have a second from Councilman Oplager, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes in a six to one vote. So we have Nina Harrison and Chelsea Lay as our two nominations. A lot of these were great applicants and your friend, Ms. Chambers there, sounded great as well. Would love to see if there's another board or committee that we could get her involved with because she has a very impressive resume. Well, thank you to all of the applicants for applying, council, thank you for your consideration. Tammy, do you have what you need for this agenda item now? Okay, perfect. All right. So now we will move on to agenda, well, so Tammy, do we need to actually now make a motion to approve the resolution now that we have our two people or would that suffice? Okay. So we have our two nominees and so, council, I will make a motion that we approve resolution 2025-r-35 with Nina Harrison and Chelsea Lay as our two nominations. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Bonner, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously 7 to 0. Next, agenda item number five, consideration and possible action to authorize the city manager to execute the property lease renewal for our amazing Manville library. Council, we talked about this during the workshop, we got a presentation from Katie there during the public comments. Do I have any comments? Do I have any comments and/or questions from council regarding this agenda item?
Yes.
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem Lands?
Other than the, uh, going to a three-month, a three-year, um, pay, a payment agreement, is there anything in this contract that has been changed that we're aware of?
The only thing that was taken out of that was in the previous, we agreed to split the cost of the air conditioning replacement when the air came time to go out. That's already been taken care of, so that language was taken out of that contract.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, do I have a motion for this agenda item?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Councilman Opeliger.
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Bonner. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously, seven to zero. And now, the time, the clock is ticking. I'm finding them a new space in three years, because they, they definitely need it. All right, Councilman Opeliger goes, "Tick-tock." All right, agenda item number six, acceptance of water and wastewater impact fee semi-annual report as recommended by the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee. We did talk about this during our workshop. Any additional comments and/or questions from council? Hearing none, do I have a motion for this agenda item? We have a motion from Councilman Rossi Knox. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Councilwoman Robie Robinson. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously, seven to zero. We have consideration and possible action to direct staff on Article... Terrible with Roman numerals. This is four, right? Because the, the one after the V is six. V is five. It was one of those things, guys, that I'm like, why, I don't ever need to know this. And I just ignored, I just ignored it in school. And then now, it's like all the time within the municipal code. It's like, God's just, yeah, God's just laughing at me in heaven there. So, for this, so Article Four, Residential Parking, Section 59-84, boats and trailers, and council, from our discussion in the workshop, we decided to take no action on this tonight. Would you guys still agree with that assessment? Okay, and then chief, it was, if you guys see that there's a recommendation to make regarding the life and safety component of this, you'll bring that forward at a later date. Okay. Moving on to agenda item number eight, consideration and possible action to approve the first of two readings of ordinance, number 2024-0-28. Joe's did a great job covering this for us during our workshop. Any comments or questions from council? Hearing none, I do have just one question, Joe's. You know, the reasoning for this abandonment, and the reason why it's recommended, is because right now, the road leads to nowhere. It stops at the canal or the ditch that's right there. It's going to not continue on. There's no necessity for it at, at that point. Because I know we don't generally want to abandon roads, because, as we're talking about in some other areas of town, it's important to have those right-of-ways. But after planning consideration, this is going nowhere.
Yeah, this, this ends at the, uh, the railroad track. However, I want to give you all a little bit of background, because 2024, we had a recommendation of approval from PDNZ, and then y'all tabled the item to get a letter of no objection from CenterPoint. Now, since then, they've changed their request slightly. Previously, there were four property owners who were all involved, who were all on board with this proposed right-of-way abandonment. And right now, the CenterPoint's letter of no objection is based on leaving a segment which is not connected to a road, uh, with no easement or an existing road that connects to it. So, if you look at the application packet that we've included in the packet, it marks up and shows the portion that is excluded from the requested abandonment. And the reason why they took that route is CenterPoint had certain processes in place for the applicant to go through in order to get a letter of no objection for the entire segment. And instead of going through that process, they, they opted to exclude that portion and see if the council is willing to abandon the remaining portion. So, if you compare it with the previous ask, there is one less property owner involved in this request now. But that property owner did provide a letter of no objection as well. And the acreage has gone down, because there is a portion that will not be abandoned. Now, I want the council to be aware that, that being excluded, you'll have a little right-of-way portion that stays there without any connection to Iowa Lane or any public easement in terms of access. So, that's not the best practice. Usually, when you abandon a street, you abandon the whole segment of the street. Or if only a portion is abandoned, usually, that portion is connected to an existing eas, public access easement or a street or a right-of-way that's already in place. So, those are some of the things that changed. Just wanted y'all to be aware.
So, Joe's, I might have missed it there. Why is that portion not being included for abandonment? Just because CenterPoint said they don't want it to be?
So, there's a little bit of complication. There's, uh, CenterPoint's trans, transmission line, the way it is laid, and, um, the way some of the easements were established way back, it does not fully protect them. So, what they told the applicants is that there's a, there's a fee involved. You pay the fee and establish an easement for CenterPoint on that property, and they will issue a letter of no objection for the entire section, for the entire segment. And, uh, what the applicant at that point did not want to spend the money or go through the process, and they decided to amend the, the amount of right-of-way they'd request to abandon. We did talk to the applicant. We did encourage them to go through the process so that the whole portion can be abandoned. And for whatever reasons, and, and I don't know what other reasons are involved, because I know there's development plans on the property at the corner of Highway Six and Iowa Lane. We have a proposed, uh, hotel, uh, developer who's considering putting a hotel at that intersection. And then Redeemer Church also has some plans to, um, expand. So, with, with all of that, they chose to go this route. But something that staff would support very strongly would have been if the entire segment of the right-of-way was being abandoned. Because this leaves a little portion which, for, for us to access, is difficult. For whatever reason, tomorrow, if we need to access, we will have to have some sort of an easement to get to this portion. So, it makes it a little out of the ordinary, not a regular straightforward situation like it was back in 2024.
Is this on page 14? Is this on page 14 handout?
If you take a look, it's going to be, Councilman, if you go to where it says it's attachment number three, which is Exhibit A. And then, if you pull up that one and you scroll down to the last page, which is page 20 of 20, it puts a really good picture of what's being discussed. And Joe's, staff's recommendation is to approve this abandonment for tonight?
Staff's recommendation is not to approve it, like I said, because of that little portion. Because this is not, uh, best practice to abandon like a portion of the right-of-way and not the whole portion. However, if the council, uh, would like to approve it, I guess we can take another look to see what, what best we can do to deal with the situation that it'll leave us with. But this doesn't follow best practice at this point.
And is, what was the original reasoning for the abandonment? Because Redeemer, they've already escrowed the funding.
For construction.
Dedicated it. So, what is the reasoning for this abandonment?
So, the whole reasoning is to have development in that area. So, the, if, if the right-of-way is abandoned, some of the detention and drainage-related problems can be solved. They get extra, um, acreage to be included in the development on the tract at the intersection. And the property owners can sw, uh, swe, sell land to, which aligns slightly better for the development plans that they have for that area. And Redeemer Church, too, has some, um, expansion plans. And if the right-of-way is abandoned, abandoned and added to their property, they could use that for drainage and whatever other needs for development. So, that was the original reasoning for a request for the right-of-way abandonment.
Okay, and so, who is the one that is requesting this abandonment? Is it Redeemer Church?
So, all the, all, right now, three property owners. So, previously, there were four property owners, uh, four entities that own the property. Right now, it's three. But I think, uh, two entities, uh, have, have some connection between each other. But right now, when, when they excluded a portion, it took one entity out, and then it reduced the acreage on, um, Sonmar of Albuquerque LLC.
Would we be land-locking any properties by abandoning this right-of-way?
No. Not, not any private property, but the portion for the right-of-way that remains, it won't be connected to a public.
Yeah, so I, I, I can't vote for this tonight as it stands, unless we have some sort of easement or some way to get to that, because it would be inappropriate for us to land-lock property without frontage access. We wouldn't allow a private property owner to build unless they had road access, frontage access to a road. So, it would seem inappropriate for us to land-lock public road with that. I mean, would that be technically illegal?
Well, it just creates a problem, because we have right-of-way we can't get to. I mean, if Robbie and them had to use it or maintain it or cut the grass, they'd have to chop her in almost over private property to get to it. So, Joe's is being very nice, where he says it's not the preferred method to abandon road and leaving a parcel out in the middle of nowhere on an island. It's really just not advisable at all to do that. I think that the key is, Sonmar, the developer, needs to go talk to CenterPoint and go through the process and, and satisfy CenterPoint, I think, is what needs to happen, rather than abandon part of the road and leave some of it hanging out there.
Yeah, I would, I would concur with that.
Mayor, but just to clarify, I mean, none of the private properties gets la, uh, landlocked because of this, it's our right-of-way. And I know one of the applicants just walked in, I saw, saw him. He owns the property at the intersection of Iowa and Highway Six, and he has plans, uh, development plans for his land. And they all combined together are attempting to abandon so that they can develop.
Yeah, and I'm not...
Separately, but, uh, make use of the land that is available from the right-of-way. And we've, uh, we've had extensive communication with CenterPoint as well. They do have a process in place that'll let them accomplish the abandonment of the entire stretch of the right-of-way, like the original request was. It, just a matter of time, and there's some fees involved.
So, what I'll do is I'll weigh in here, and then we'll give it to Councilwoman Sarmiento. It's, I'm not opposed to abandoning the right-of-way, and it makes sense to abandon it all the way through. But Sonmar needs to do the right thing and get the abandonment for that far end. We wouldn't allow, and we have requirements regarding frontage access, and you can't land-lock properties. And we would be doing that exact same thing to this right-of-way, because Sonmar hasn't done the process. And so, it can't be rules for thee, but not for me. And so, if I had to vote on this tonight, I'd vote no. I would prefer that we take no action and let Son, Sonmar run through that process, because it does seem to benefit Redeemer, and it benefits the corner property owner on Iowa Lane. So, it makes sense. But until that final piece gets wrapped up, I would be uncomfortable voting for this. It's my personal position. Councilwoman?
I agree with, with the majority of that. I just, I don't have clarity on why we're not going through CenterPoint. I know that the, the letters of no objection, usually, if, if you satisfy their requests, it happens. But I also know that that process is lengthy, which I'm kind of surprised, because the process going through the city is very lengthy. So, is it, is it just a matter of convenience that, that they're asking us to, to approve this, and then they can go to CenterPoint? Or is it just more difficult to go through CenterPoint for, to have them go ahead and, and issue that, no objection?
No, on CenterPoint's side, their position is like their lines are right now in a right-of-way. So, they know that it's protected. And if it is abandoned, they want to make sure that they have the easement so that they can control, uh, and they don't lose their infrastructure within that area.
Of course.
So, it took some time for them to do research and all of that. But now, everything is figured out. It's just, it's just going through the process, establishing the easement, paying the fees. And once that is done, they'll issue the letter of no objection for the entire stretch.
Because if they...
We've had extensive communication with them.
Okay, so if they have proved that...
Right.
If, if CenterPoint approves that, that's just saying, hey, we don't object to you developing it. But if we have to get in there, you're admitting, you're, you're basically acknowledging that we have to come in and we're going to destroy whatever's built there to get to our, our lines. And so, sorry to interrupt you, but that's what you were saying, is that they've, they've gotten to this point where they've said, we will agree to that. But we also have to come in agreement with releasing that as well.
Correct, correct. And we, we abandon the right-of-way if we get no objection from CenterPoint. And CenterPoint is not going, is not able to give us a letter of no objection, because they don't have that easement agreement between the property owner and CenterPoint.
This is a kerfuffle, Dan's word.
And that's where, Councilwoman, I, I lean to taking no action and letting them figure it, figure it out instead of voting on this to, tonight. That's where I stand.
I, I personally don't want to impede development. I don't want to have my personal opinions at this point kind of stop that. But, but it's kind of like robbing Peter to pay Paul in this situation. And so, i, if the burden is on us or is the burden on them, it's just, it's very complicated.
So, so, let me try to simplify it one last time.
Okay.
Maybe I'm confusing it. So, there is a process for right-of-way abandonment. And last time, when we had the first public hearing, all that was outstanding was, uh, sorry, the first reading of the ordinance. All that was outstanding was getting a letter of no objection from CenterPoint.
That's it.
That's it.
And did we get that?
We could not get that.
Okay.
Because CenterPoint, when they looked at the whole situation, they said, "A portion of the right-of-way is within our transmission corridor." So, we cannot issue the letter of no objection until the applicant goes through the process or the property owner pays a fee and establishes, uh, easement for CenterPoint.
Yep.
Now, the applicant said, "Well, instead of doing that, let's, let's take that portion out of the request." And CenterPoint said, "Hey, that's not a preferred option, but if that's what y'all want, we'll give the letter of no objection."
Without that piece being in that, saying, "We'll give you the letter of no objection for the other, but not this," because that was what they were focused on.
Correct.
This little area here.
Yeah, they needed that establishment of an easement. So, now, what that creates a problem is for us, where if we abandon a large portion of it and leave this small portion, there's no way for the city to access that portion if we have to. And then, there's a little portion that left, is left hanging with no action taken on. So, it's on the applicant, and it's a, it's not a complicated process from CenterPoint's side. And they've done all the research. They've, um, they, all that they need is a payment of a fee and, uh, doing the paperwork that's needed for the easement. And the applicant is aware of it, too. And if it doesn't, uh, get approved at this meeting, that is the next step that they're going to follow.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other? Mayor Pro Tem, and then Councilman Bonner?
Joe's, I guess this Lot 205, the 30 acres of the Sonmar Inn, that's the, that's the one we're actually talking about as far as the remaining issue, correct?
Let me double check. So, on that application, the exhibit that was included, I have, so, so initially, if you see, there were, there were four entities. There was a, there was a parcel owned by Redeemer Church. There is a 6.327 acres owned by Melde Hospitality. And then, there is, uh, a portion owned by Sonmar of Albuquerque, and then a portion owned by Milestone South Six Development. So, the portion being excluded is owned by Milestone South Six, and then a portion of what, um, Sonmar of Albuquerque owns.
I must be looking at a different plat then, because what I'm seeing here is Lot 205, to the, I guess that would be kind of to the west of Redeemer Church? That's, is, am I not following that that's the portion we're talking about is going to get, get blocked off?
So, Joe's, this is attachment number four. It says Exhibit B combined.
Right, so, let me open that. So, that portion is not being excluded. That portion is part of the request to be abandoned.
All right. Then I'm confused as well, so...
It's on Exhibit Three, page 20.
It's on, uh, Exhibit Three, page twenty.
Exhibit Three?
Or Attachment Number Three, and then page twenty.
So that shows, that shows just the general, uh, on the map. But if you're looking at a survey for the portion that is being excluded, you'll have to look at Exhibit C. That's the exhibit that shows, um...
Attachment, Attachment Number Five.
Attachment Number Five, Exhibit C, which shows the portion that is excluded.
I might have it in pink.
And if you read the pink text and the pink outline, there's a .4946 acre. That's the portion being excluded, which is owned by Milestone Six.
Gotcha.
And then the .0993 acre is taken out from the Sonmar's portion.
I see. Okay.
Does that answer your question, Mayor?
Yes, it does, Mayor. I'm in your, in agreement with you.
All right. So Council, would you guys like to make a motion on this? Or would you like to take no action until, okay, getting a sense of taking no action on this item?
I would like to take no action until the whole easement is cleared.
Okay. So Joe's, I think you've got the feedback from Council. We're not opposed to abandoning it, because we know that the right-of-way essentially goes nowhere, but it needs to be all of it. And that to those applicants, they need to get that process submitted and, uh, get the application submitted and processed through CenterPoint, and then we're, we're willing to consider it. Joe's, thank you for taking a complicated process and simplifying for us. You did a really good job.
And I'm sorry if I was the reason for the complication in terms of explaining.
Well, it's an item we haven't talked about since 2024. And, uh, so it's been, been a while. So thank you for refreshing our memory. Okay. We will now move on to mayor and council comments. Any council comments? Just a few mayor comments real quick. Manville versus Shadow Creek is happening this Friday at Freedom Field. Big game. Both teams are, are two and one. Um, so hope you guys will be able to make it out, or you can watch online. Council, to let you know, heading into the month of October, we will be, uh, performing or conducting the performance reviews for our two direct reports, which would be our city manager, Dan Johnson, and our city attorney, Bobby Gervais. So be expecting some communications coming out about that. You'll probably see it primarily coming from Chad. We'll work through Chad for that, sending out the reviews that we did last year, how we're gonna process it this year. But expect an executive session on each of those two meetings for both of those two gentlemen. Uh, and then there's a lot of events that are happening this week. There's a car wash happening at Manville High School to support some of the students on Wednesday. There's a, for the student council at Honorrais on Wednesday. There is a, where if you buy food from Honorrais, you can donate. They, they'll be donating a little bit of money to the high school. And then I also believe Wednesday is BCCA. That's happening on Wednesday night. So it's a busy week full of, uh, full of events there. So, oh, Ms. Tammy, yes, ma'am?
And then the last thing, so you'll know, there was a meeting scheduled, um, for Thursday. That meeting will be canceled, since you guys did get the vote on the tax ordinance.
Perfect. Unless you guys want to meet, I mean, we can still, still meet if you guys want to.
I'm having surgeries.
And also, I want to say a preemptive congratulation to Harry and to his lovely fiancee that's in the crowd. They are getting married on September 24th here in, in Alaska. So we're very excited for you guys. We can't wait to see your photos. We hope that you guys have a good trip, and, and congratulations. All right, Council, with that, I will make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second from the Councilwoman. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion to adjourn passes unanimously, so.